Fantastic. Fantastic. Well, we will call this policy work session into order. Thank you, everybody. As folks may be able to see, we are trying out different venues for the our school board meetings, and it will probably take us a little bit of time to get to a format and a shape of the room that works for everybody. So please do have patience as we work through. But with that being said, let's begin with our policy committee meeting, which we begin with the approval of the minutes from the February seventh meeting. So.
They are fine by me.
And they were fine by me as well. So for the two members who were able to participate today, the minutes are passed, which brings us to Agenda Item four point one, which is the administering of medication to students. So good to see everybody. Thank you for joining us, Carrie. Thank you for joining us. Dr. Dondally. Um, it may be helpful just for folks who may be watching this online for the first time. Geo folks, I apologize. I know last time sound was a problem. Should I bring the mic closer? Is this? That is not going to happen, but we'll at least move it closer to here. Yep, fantastic. Would you care to sort of set some context for what we're doing here? And then we're unfortunately probably going to have to go through the policy line by line.
Quite all right. No, thank you. Actually, this is important work. New York State last year in 2022 issued new guidance for medication administration in schools. And to give you a little bit of context around that, it is the most frequent intervention that's conducted in the school setting in terms of of health and healthcare. Just over a hundred days into the school year, our nurses have administered almost six thousand medicate or medication administrations. There's been six thousand institute instances of medications being provided to students. Most of them are scheduled. Ninety-two percent of them are scheduled. Some are as needed. For example, like an asthma inhaler, an EpiPen, things of that nature. Today alone, we had almost seventy medications distributed to students just today, March seventh. So I appreciate the time and effort that's being put into the development of this policy procedure and regulation, because it drives so much of what we do on a day-to-day basis around school health. So with that being said, the first piece here, policy, first page that you may be looking at in the packet, there the there are few changes to this. The changes that we are proposing are the last two sentences of the first paragraph, beginning with, "The school nurse may request."
We're still in the policy and we're not in the regulation or the procedure.
That's correct. First paragraph, last two sentences.
Yep. So the good thing is this provides us an opportunity to review the policy as a whole. As I understand it, and according to our records, the last time we reviewed this policy was 2011. What we have tried to do, especially with a policy that also includes regulation and procedure, at times, it doesn't mean we need to do it here, is to provide some sort of statement that sort of helps describe what we're trying to do. So if you look at the policies that we have later in the Agenda Policy zero one one five, it begins with, "The Ithaca City School District believes in a safe and caring environment." And I'm paraphrasing what that is. So I don't know that we need one here, but if we're being consistent, you know, I think my notes here say something like, recognizing that we are partners between home and school, or recognizing that healthcare extends beyond home or includes the school day. I don't know if there's some sort of statement or sentence like that that would begin the policy that would help contextualize it. So I guess that's my first question. Does that seem like a, is it an unfair request and/or should we go down that path?
It's not an unfair request, and actually, there's language to that effect in the regulation that we could easily relocate to the start of the policy. That language is as follows. "The Ithaca City School District will provide for the administration of medication to those children who have medical conditions requiring medications be administered during the school day." And that's that's the sentence that potentially we could migrate to the start of our policy.
Fantastic. Where is that sent? It's under the regulation, under medical administration?
That's correct. Right.
I think that would be good, and where we've done that in a number of situations where we repeat that same sort of intro in the policy and the regulation.
Okay. Okay, so taking that sentence and repeating it in the regulation.
And the policy as well, sort of to start the policy.
Right. It's in the policy right now, that sentence. And then now, but where are we putting it in the regulation?
It's already in the regulation. It's in medication administration. What we're discussing is beginning the actual policy with that language, with that sentence.
I'm confused to say. Okay, met, okay. All right. So it's already there in medical administration, but it's already there in 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 five, four, two, three. So first set.
Say it again.
Oh, I see, I see. Oh, it is there. It is there.
Right. So I think what I'm discussing is something that's a little, for lack of a better word, I don't know about philosophical, but provides, why would we, why do we have a policy like this? What's the purpose of this policy?
One is to fulfill state requirements for sure, but I think another important piece of this is, as it relates to our values, particularly around inclusion. Right? So for students who have health concerns, our commitment to inclusion is is reflected in this policy.
I think that's the language that I would be looking for.
That sounds good. Yeah.
Right, sort of an affirmation of our stance on inclusion. Not sure what that looks like, and we can wordsmith, but that's what I think I was looking for for first sense. On the actual policy itself, page one, five, four, two, three, we continue to use the language parent or guardian, or parent slash guardian.
Okay.
I imagine that's, I know that's the legal language that we're asked to use, and I'm asking my policy colleague or advice if that's the language or to folks in the room as well, if that's the language that we want to continue to use. Don't know if the question makes sense.
We pulled it from the New York State regulations, but it doesn't matter.
Well, I think I brought this up before. I mean, certainly in the first paragraph of the policy, we could, the one that says parents guardians slash guardians will dispense medications before and or after school hours. That could be caregivers. But I'm just wondering, the parent guardian of children who have medical conditions that cause the child to need medications during school hours may arrange with the school nurse for the administration of those medications. Can, doesn't it have to be a parenting, a parent or guardian legally? And somebody else who is not a parent or a legal guardian do this arrangement?
Yes, but only with the written permission of the parent or guardian.
Okay. Okay, so parental guardian permission is required. So that has to be parental guardian. Okay, so the other, a caregiver could could arrange, make the arrangements, but it has to be accompanied by parental guardian permission.
I mean, there's other parts in here where it says whenever possible, parents are into the dispensing.
I just said that we could make that care, we could make that caregivers.
What are you using the other policy?
We've debated and debated.
We use caregivers unless it's something where there's a legal issue where it has to be a parent or a guardian.
Maybe that's what we changed it to.
Wait, we, we can change it to caregivers except for the one about permission. And yeah, so a caregiver must bring the medication along with required documentation to the school nurse.
Yeah, and I don't know.
Because they can bring it as long as they have the documentation.
Right, right. I don't know what the language is, and not that I want to, you know, spend the next thirty minutes having a conversation about it, but I do know that we need to try to be consistent with the other policies that we have passed, which have at least entertained the idea of different language beyond.
Right, and I, I think we've used, well, you know, I spoke without a great deal of thought. My sense is that whenever possible, when it's not a matter of legality, we have used caregiver.
So I'm looking to anybody in the room that may have thoughts or ideas about it, given some of the things that we've done in the past, as well as our medical books. Yes, Ms. Dolly? Because it would fall in line with legal word that we, language that we use elsewhere. I'm good. I have other. Mara, is that good for you? That we'll just check that and see and make sure we're consistent with some of our other policies? Fantastic. On that same, this is just a info question for me. Page one, the policy, second paragraph, medication may not be transported on school buses. I'm just curious about that line and, you know, nothing to change. I just, I think I want more information.
No, excellent point, and that actually relates to the previous sentence, meaning that a student can't, a parent shouldn't be handing a medication off to school saying, oh, there's an order at school, take this to the nurse. We do need, so that can be worded for better clarity, because it's connected to the previous statement, the previous sentence. Because of course, if there's a field trip and medications are going on the field trip, they are going on a bus, but they are going with a teacher.
So do we, yeah, um, do we even need that sentence? If it says, "A caregiver or must bring the medication to the school nurse," do we even need to say anything more?
Well, I'm giving you a question that we do want to say more to make sure it's not like a Tuesday.
I think it happens. It's nice to be clear about it.
I mean, do we want to say, you know, you know, parents, caregivers, I mean, caregivers must bring the, make it, caregivers, not students, must bring the medication.
Certainly, yeah.
Along with required documentation.
And the reason, the reason to use parent guardian in that context is at the time that medications are are being given to the school nurse, surrendered to the school, is also when the parent guardian is consenting, so they actually physically sign the orders.
Then that one needs to be.
Mm-hmm. It does need to be parent guardian, and that's why we want them to be the person to bring it.
A parent guardian, I think it should be a, not just parent. A parent slash guardian must bring, guardian comma, not a student or not the student, must bring the the medication along with required documentation as out.
This is why low policy. I don't think we can say that, because there are instances where there may be a student who is independent.
Oh, right, emancipated.
Emancipated, that actually can be.
Right.
But we're trying to communicate that we don't just want on just a regular day, a student to bring the medication.
Right.
So we'll let you all figure out what that language may be, if that's okay.
Yep, happy to do that.
Is that okay by you, Mara?
Yeah, that's fine.
So that's all I had for the policy. We're going to have more fun with the regulation and the procedure.
I would just add, we added the last two sentences to that first paragraph. One about the nurse may request that only the necessary quantity be administered, be provided.
Oh, wait, where is that?
The second to last sentence of the first paragraph.
Oh, the first paragraph, okay.
Uh, because we don't want to, we, this occurred, has occurred during various times, like when there's closures, unexpected closures, or even the advent of the pandemic, where any excess supply, the parents were then trying to get back. And so we want to make sure that what's at school is what's needed at school, and what's at home is available at home. The other piece of it is, and this was not previously included in the in the policy, was the first dose of newly prescribed medication. Again, concern about adverse effects or things of that nature. So making clear right at the front that first doses are not given at school.
Yeah, that made sense to me.
And then in the last paragraph, we made mention, second sentence, please see five, four, two, three P for information regarding procedures, because since our last conversation or meeting, we had gone and added procedures, so we wanted to reference those in the policy.
Mara, I'm good with the policy?
Yeah.
We'll wait for some language changes. That brings us to five, four, two, three dash R, which is the regulations. For the most part, I think this worked for me. I had questions. I kept writing about age, 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 but that gets identified. It did make me wonder if the third paragraph, not the third paragraph, whether a student should be considered a supervised student should be based on the student's cognitive or emotional development rather than age, that if that should lead the regulation or not, but that was just.
Where is that? Oh, I see.
The way in which I read it.
I, yeah, I like that. Yes.
And I don't know if that makes a difference for you all, but I, as I was reading the first couple of things, I kept saying age, 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 and then it gets answered at the end, but I don't know if that's important enough to lead or not lead. I was just.
I think that's good, because then it goes on to say, I, basically how it's determined that they are a supervised student. It's they can.
So then that means, that means that paragraph would start the supervised students
Right.
formally self-directed. That would lead there and then go from there.
Right.
How, again, just point of information for me, how many students do we have with a self-carey order? Do we have a number of students that are, that would, well, can you tell me what is a self-carey? I mean, I think I know, but can you tell me what is a self-carey order?
Sure, it's for kids who have issues where they may need to administer something in case of emergency. For example, my son has a peanut allergy, and so he is twelve, he's in sixth grade, but he knows EpiPen. He knows what's happening reaction, and so he carries it.
Yeah.
So inhalers are used like that sometimes too.
And those are all things that we want on file? Is that a, is that a poor choice of terms? Like, we want to make sure we have documentation of a self-carey order, right?
Yeah, so we actually talked about it right before we sat down. The independent student, I think we wanted to, as we did with the supervised student, add sort of the bullet points of how we determine that. So the child needs to show that they know when to use the medication. The doctor has to sign off, the parent has to sign off.
Right.
Yep.
So we were talking about how to sort of mirror what.
Similar to the bullet points to add some additional.
Yeah, independent students have to meet all the same criteria as supervised and have the ability to self-administer and self-care and or self-caring.
So is that something, I'm putting on a school board member hat. Is that something that has to be demonstrated so the district will not be held liable?
Yeah, so that actually is a school nurse, we have the school nurse sign off that they agree that the child can do it too. So it's not just the doctor, not just the parent herself, it's the school nurse, so they feel comfortable doing that.
And that's the case with supervised students that.
And independent students.
And independent, yeah.
More additional questions on that first page of the regulation?
Only, you know, it's headed definitions, and then medication administration is not a definition. So we need to somehow, maybe we just center that. Maybe even we center definitions, and then we have the things that are being defined, left justified, and then center medication administration.
Which would mean that we would have to center definitions as well?
No, I was saying, don't center definite, I mean, center the heading definition.
Yes.
Yes, and then the content is less.
And then center medication administration to indicate where an intersection.
And then center administration by unlicensed personnel and center medication errors.
We're a little too familiar as policy folks with formatting. Is what we're saying making any sense? I just want to make sure.
No, it's good. Actually, we had, that was just initially a paragraph, and I was like, we need something there to signify that it's not a definition anymore.
Right.
The century.
It makes you happy. Melissa's so glad to make you happy.
Just done two, since submitting this, we have two other changes we'd like to propose. Under nurse-dependent students.
Page.
Page, uh, the first, first page of regulations. The last sentence in the first paragraph says, "These nurse-dependent students must have their medication administered to them by an appropriate licensed health professional." We would like to add the phrase, "or parent guardian."
Okay.
Because we do have instances, particularly field trips, or the occasions where if a medication is not maintained at school, a parent may come on campus to deliver, to provide a medication.
Could a caregiver do that if all the documentation is there?
With written permission.
With written permission. From the, from the parent.
Right, so we would like to add that language.
Yes.
And then we want to remove some detail from the fourth bullet under supervised students. We would like it to read, "Identify the correct dosage as handed to them." Semi-colon.
Period or semicolon.
Mm-hmm.
So take the rest of that out.
Correct.
Yep. Okay, that works for me.
Excellent.
Mara, you all set?
Yep.
Page two. My immediate response is for consistency with our punctuation. The order of the healthcare provider must contain the following information, semicolon, date order is issued, excuse me, colon after that, date issued, date order is issued, semicolon, student name and birthday, semicolon, to go all the way down. And then the second to last, the penultimate bullet point. I think more I use it correctly.
You did. When I was making notes about some of these policies, I used the word penultimate.
During, or duration of medication order, semicolon, and I want to know if this is an and or an or. And I have that question a couple of times.
It's an and.
It's an and. So it's got to be all of these. Okay?
Okay, so we would put, wait, where, where, where do we put this and?
We're going to put semicolons through all of the bullets.
Right.
And then the second to last one, duration of medication order, semicolon, and name, title, address, phone number, signature.
That indicates that the list, everything is required.
Yep, and then to end that last bullet point with a period.
Right.
I would note too, the fourth bullet, there's again a formatting error. Medication name, semicolon, next line, medication dosage. So that correction will be made as well.
Okay. So then to the first full paragraph on page two, medication orders and permissions must be secured annually. And then I wrote, here on my notes, I have my apologies, let me make sure I get this. At the beginning, so I wrote, medication orders, permissions must be secured annually, comma, at the beginning of each school year, comma, or when medication dosage changes. I don't know if that's what it means, mutated or not.
No, you wouldn't have that second comma.
No, we're not doing it Oxford commas anymore?
Not with an or.
Okay. Duly noted. Make sure that's in the minutes, Tricia. So, but there would be a comma. It does make sense for us to put a comma, secured annually, comma, at the beginning of each school year, or medication changes. That's what we're trying to communicate, right?
Yes.
Okay. Mara, anything for you? I have a couple more on this page, but I want to.
No, I think I'm good. Yes.
Administration by unlicensed personnel. What did I wrote? A district employee who is not a school nurse may volunteer to administer medications if the school nurse is not available. Should it say only under the following conditions? Or under the following conditions? I don't know if I was being excessive or not. And maybe just under the following conditions is perfectly fine.
I think it should be, well, I don't know.
Right, it may allow us a little bit more leeway just to say under the following conditions.
And then there should be a colon.
Right, the students are designated as supervised, colon, and then and or, I imagine.
Semi.
Semicolon, right.
And.
And, yeah.
So examples of this particular situation, although we do address field trips on here as well, but field trips for sure. But also in the event which has happened in recent years when there's no nurse in the building. And so teachers and or administrators have been previously trained on administering medications to those students. By and large, the vast majority of our students, particularly at the elementary level, are supervised. And then at the secondary, increasingly, you see that they're independent.
So what happens if there, and does this happen, that there is unexpectedly no school nurse? And nobody, so, so what happens with medication?
There are a couple of things that we've been doing. One of our practices is we redeploy a nurse from another building to go and ensure that medication is prepared for administration that day and to review that with the teacher and or administrator if it's not been previously done. But in most cases where we have nurses who've engaged with teachers and or administrators previously, the nurses have actually prepared, if you open a medication cabinet, what you'll see is medications are prepared as if they're going on a field trip. In bags with pictures of the student, with the orders included, with the medication included. Again, lessons of the pandemic.
Yeah.
Um, so that if you are a teacher or administrator who is admin, providing medication to a student, that information is readily available. So we've prepped them in the health office, in the medication cabinet, to look much like a field trip, just to, in that event.
That's helpful. After the and, which we're going to add to the sec, to the first bullet point, under administration by unlicensed personnel, it says the school district would not hold an adult volunteer responsible. And should, I'm wondering, should, should say will not hold or?
Yeah, I think so.
Will not?
Will not, yeah.
Everything has been fixed. And then we have bullet points at the bottom of that page as well, which should be, the first one should be a semicolon, not a period. Then I presume it's an and, not an or. The medication is not a controlled substance, semicolon, and the student is determined, determined to do.
I'm a little bit, what, the elementary school student in exceptional circumstances, what does that mean?
Yeah, like my son could carry his EpiPen when he was in fifth grade.
Right. Right.
Cause he gave it himself multiple times and he can do it, so it's a theme.
Right, okay.
Sometimes this language is, becomes familiar to us because we're in this world. Uh, there are a number of times where we say, this is an example. The student has been determined to be independent, or to be independent. And like up above a couple of bullet points, it's like the students are designated as supervised. I'm just wondering if that's the language we should be using throughout, or should it say? The students are designated as supervised students, or the student has been determined to be an independent student. Should we be repeating the language of independent, supervised, as opposed to just supervised and independent, right? Should it include student as well, I, I, I don't know, I'm asking the, the question.
I think so.
Well, also, I mean, uh, should we use the same language like in? The first bullet, the students are designated as supervised. The students. So I think maybe we should, uh, let's see, and to be, okay, a district may, under the, uh, the student is designated. It should be in the first one, singular, the student is designated as supervised, self-directed.
Or, Moira, my apologies, the student is designated, designated as a supervised student, is what I'm asking if we should be saying. Cause that's the definition that we used before, as a supervised student, independent student.
Supervised student.
And I don't want to get too far into, I'm just wondering.
Yeah.
For our parent caregiver who's reading it.
The student, student.
And we don't have to, if it's fine by us, we can, I'm just, I'm asking the question. All right, that's, that page is good for me.
Well, then, I think, yeah, uh, should we say? I mean, the first one says, is designated, the second one has just determined to be independent, has been designated to be independent.
Yep.
Consistent use of the term designated?
Yeah.
Uh-huh. Yep.
All right, so, that page, the bottom of that page was a page three, right, it's got two bullets.
Right.
The students, the student, right, we're going to singular, is designated as, never saying the student has been determined to be. Do we have a difference in language between which one of those are, is, is a better descriptor of what we're talking about? That is, is it designation or they've been determined?
Or how about has been designated? Because it is, it's a label.
That's true.
You know, so, the determination, they get the label when all of these things have been checked out, after the determination, but then they get. The label.
Yep, yep, I'm in agreement.
But I think it should be has been designated. Has been designated, has been designated in both.
Yep. So that brings us to page four, if I'm not mistaken. The, we're gonna continue with our semicolons.
Right.
And then I presume there would be an and. After the fir, the third bullet point, the first bullet point on page four. Does that make sense?
So we're still at same list of bullets, so, yeah, okay, semicolon, semicolon, and.
Right, the parent guardian and healthcare provider have completed and signed a request for self-administration, medication form, semicolon, and. The student has understood. Or anything for you there? The first full paragraph on that page, just curious about why we identify two different. We don't identify specific medications elsewhere, is there a reason to just, to identify the two? Specific medications in this paragraph?
Those are the most frequently, um, deployed emergency medications.
What is glucagon?
Glucagon is for instance.
Yeah.
And should there be a hyphen between auto injectors?
Good question.
Not sure, that's a good question, I don't know. Precision of language, yeah.
I'm checking that, uh, it looks like, when I type it in, well. No, when I type in it with, uh, a hyphen, it gives me a whole list of things without hyphens, so I think no.
Okay, perfect. And then that last sentence, any medications administered must have written healthcare provider order. And written parental consent, and what I wrote in my notes was on file or present with the district. Because you can have those things, but doesn't mean that we have those things.
Right.
So trying to indicate somewhere that it has to be with the district as well as someone, and I don't know what that is, I'm, again, I'm just asking.
Yeah, no, that's an excellent point, so on file in the health office, which is where it would be kept, right? And I would add to the, the, the reason for that language is this, so. Medications that are distributed in school have orders attached to them, we also have non-patient-specific EpiPens and Narcan.
Right.
Doctor Dondelli's written the orders for those, but only school nurses can administer those. So, in the event of a kid, a student having an anaphylactic reaction, who does not have an EpiPen. Order in an EpiPen in the health office, it's the nurse who's administering them. So that's why we, that language around.
Yeah.
Um, medications administered by non, unlicensed personnel must have those things, um, on file.
Yep, that works for me. Uh, if we keep going down to administering medication on field trips and a, after-school activities. It's, my first response is just again, the periods as opposed to semicolons.
And I think also that, to be consistent with the language, medications to be administered to students who are designated.
As.
As supervised during a field trip will be carried by a responsible adult, semicolon, students who.
Have been.
Have been, yeah, let's keep it, have been. Have been designated.
As independent.
As independent.
Yeah, and I think Moira's right, the more I read it, the more we don't need to repeat it if we keep that language, we don't need to repeat student afterwards.
Right.
To say as independent.
Right.
That works for me.
With this, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, please.
I was gonna say with this particular section, um, it's not reflected here, what we would like to propose is reordering the bullets to reflect the same order that we have on the, in the regulations. So start leading with, for students who have been designated nurse dependent, that would be bullet number one.
Yep.
Number two would be medications to be administered to students who have been designated supervised, and then the third, independent, so it would reflect the same order.
Right.
On a related note, um, under nurse dependent stu, for students who are nurse dependent, the district may, we want to, we would like to propose a change in the order to the bullets there. Leading first with permit the parent guardian to attend, the activity administered medication.
My apologies, where are we again?
Sorry, under, um, the section on field trips and after-school activities, for students who are nurse dependent.
Yep.
The district may.
Have been designated as nurse dependent.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. Sorry, so keep going from there?
The subbullets, we would like to change the order.
Of the subbullets as well?
Mm-hmm.
So not just the regular bullets, but also change the order of the subbullets.
Yep.
And what order do you want them in?
We would like the second subbullet to, to be moved last, and the wording to be changed to identify a school nurse. So it would read, for students who are nurse dependent, the district may permit the parent or guardian to attend the activity and administer the medication. The second bullet would be, accept a written request from the parent guardian to have another adult unemployed by the school district to be allowed to administer the medication. The third would be ask the parent, student's parent guardian or provider to change the med orders, and then lastly would be, identify a school nurse. Or appropriate licensed healthcare provider to accompany the student and administer the medication.
And that means this one would be an or.
Yeah, yes, these are ors, mm-hmm.
Grammar question, in terms of, um, if this leads for students who are nurse dependent, the district may. How does that, how does this work?
Oh, for students who have been designated as nurse dependent. Uh, comma, I think, the student may permit the parent or guardian to.
But it wouldn't be colon, colon, right, like administering medication on field trips and after-school activities, colon?
Uh, no, I don't think so, um. I don't think so. But I'm not one hundred percent sure.
So then one of the things we could do is then say something like, the following will be followed, and I'm, bad language, I apologize. Um, or the following will, whatever, administering medication on field trips and after-school activities, period, and then the bullets. Moira?
Oh, wait, what did you say, um? Make that.
So turn the administering medication on field trips and after-school activities either into a.
A heading, a centered heading?
That's probably the better way.
Yes, I think so.
Yep.
A, a bold-faced centered heading.
Yep, and all that works for me, we're gonna reorder, okay?
Yeah.
And then the medication errors works for me because it also references the procedures that come next.
Right.
All right, we're having fun here. On to page five.
Yep.
Now, now we're on to the procedure.
And this is all new, this was not previously reflected, um, in our policy, but based on our last meeting and conversation, we thought. It prudent to include it, not only, um, did we move information from, from what was proposed in the regulations, but we added to it, and honestly. Um, I engaged with a nurse today who had looked at this and said, well, don't we already do this? And I said, well, yes, but we would like to ensure that it's enshrined in our policies and procedures, so you have here the, um. Attention to, uh, the responsibilities largely of the school nurse around medication, uh, administration.
Okay.
Okay, school nurses will also engage in the following activities, colon.
Or I was wondering if we can say listed below, and keep the period.
Engage in the, the activ, the following activities listed below, okay, yeah. First following listed below is kind of redundant.
Yep, but we can get rid of the following.
Yeah, we can get rid of the following.
All right, and then we have security. That all read well to me beyond the punctuation of semicolons. Actually, I don't know, do we need semicolons, Moira, if we don't have a colon, we can keep the periods?
I think we can, yes.
Okay.
Uh, so, okay, so security, verify the information. I think maybe we could get, uh, rid of the label because it's an on the. Verify the information on the original pharmacy labeled container or manufactured package. And the medicated or, medication or assigned by a licensed healthcare match. And then that comma is not necessary, and that both apply to the child in question.
Uh, as medical professionals, thoughts about that sense? Is there a reason to keep on the label of the original pharmacy labeled container?
I think you could get rid of one of the labels, so verify the information.
Yeah, on the label of the ori, yeah, get rid of the labeled, that's better, on the label of the original pharmacy container.
Yep.
Or manufacturer's package.
Yep.
And the medicated, some of it is no comma, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Training?
Mm-hmm.
That was good to me.
Yeah.
Um, administration, my first reaction was some have questions and some do not. And I think we'd want to turn the questions into statements.
Oh.
And we can sort of keep the numbers, cause we do identify there are six rights of safe medication administration. Then there are subbullets under the numbers, but I would turn the questions into statements. Like ensure the strength of dosage mass, matches the order, or something like that.
Just going back under training, the second bullet. Inform supervisor, who's doing the informing? Uh, oh, school nurse, okay, right, well, all right, inform supervisor, okay, yeah, that's fine, I just kind of lost track of.
To make sure that that is clear, what I would recommend we do, and I'm trying to do it now. Moira, you can't see it, but up top to that first paragraph of the procedure. The last, the first paragraph, the last sentence says, school nurses will also engage in the activities listed below.
Right.
To turn that in, to turn that into its own sentence, as opposed to part of the paragraph.
Okay, yeah, I think that's good, yeah, to, to make it clear that this, all of this is school nurses.
All right. I'm, on to page six, I don't know if you are, Moira? I'm confused by the bullet points after number six. Um, because the section above for before says, adhere to the rights and safe, adhere to the six rights of safe medication administration. And then we list the six, and then we have three bullet points after the six. Rights, and so it doesn't. It just didn't, I, I didn't, I got confused by what we were communicating there.
Okay, bullet point and then six, okay, yeah, right.
Where it says call the healthcare provider to reserve, so I don't know what that section is, or.
Well, that's a separate, oh, I think, I, yeah, I think.
Separate section.
It's a separate.
Concerns about medication or the child not getting their medication, so it's not really one of the six.
Right.
But it is still part of administration.
Yeah, start of administration, so, so the six rights of safe medication administration are, you know. Bullet point one, then the particulars of the six rights, and then moving on.
Continues to call healthcare provider, okay.
Would it be helpful to have the last three bullets lead that section, and then the section end with the six rights?
Uh, it would be helpful for me, but I don't know if that's the order that we want it to be in, or if it's what we actually do, or what's.
Yeah, yeah, I hear what you're saying, because, um. Yeah, I think the rights have to come first.
I get it now that I've seen it also in a different context online, so I'm, I think I'm okay with it.
Yeah.
Okay. Moira, you're good?
I'm good.
Uh, medication disposal, I think I had.
And that, this is still part of what school nurses and activity that the school nurses will engage in.
Those three bullets of admin, of admin, or administering, right?
Well. One, two, three, four bullets. But all of this, yeah, you know, so they're gonna engage in administration, they're gonna engage in medication disposal, um.
Hopefully not a medication error, but if they do, it'll be our process.
Um, yeah, that's what I'm. Um, yeah, that's what I'm.
But before we get there, I'm still interested in the medication disposal.
Okay.
Because the first sentence, I understand the idea of it, but it didn't read clear to me. That there would be an attempt to return unused and or expired medication to the parental or parent or guardian. Is that?
Yes, so at the end of the year or if a child stops taking a medication, we, the nurses try to get it back to.
Right.
The parent.
There's, that last part of it, I think we can get out. If there is any unused medication remaining, we've already said that, that. If this is about unused or expired medication. You'd do it at the end of the school year.
Mm-hmm, or if a medication changes.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then the dispose of medications in accordance with environmental conservation recommendations. Okay. Questions there, Moira?
Yeah, no, yeah.
Uh, then moving to medication errors. The only questions that I had um that section was there's uh, we use the word immediately notify district medical director. But then we use notify supervisor or notify parent or guardian. Didn't know if that was by design that are, we, we will immediately notify one person, but then will quasi notify other folks when time.
I think we just wanted to make sure they called me first because the most important thing is that the student's safe.
Gotcha.
And so then I would help them. Right. Sort of triage who needs to be notified, be notified next.
So for that bullet point number two, can we say the school nurse shall immediately notify district medical director to ensure student safety?
Yeah.
Yeah, the first, the first, um, and the reason these are numbered rather than bulleted is it's re- supposed to read like a order of events procedure.
Okay.
So for example, if the nurse in their assessment of the student knows right away that the student's in trouble, they may not, they're gonna call nine one one before they call Dr. Dindali.
Yep.
They're gonna act in the best interest of the student. Then they would contact Dr. Dindali and say, nine one one's on the way, you know.
So Carrie, can we say the following ordered steps should be taken for any medication errors? Is that okay by you, Moira?
Yeah. And just in the, the point about uh contact the poison control center if wrong medication or overdose is given and then that comma is not needed. And or nine one one.
All right, so the only two questions I have for this policy, and I'm sure Moira may have some, is one for us to consider the use of labels. We have found as we go through policies over the years that the labels change or the the specificity of the title of the position changes.
Oh, right.
Shouldn't keep it in here. I'm just thinking about. Yeah, I'm just wondering about that. And so, um, you know, we do use the medical director, we do say the director of health services and wellness. We can keep it. I'm just, I'm raising a question. I don't know if there are more general labels or titles that could be used, but um. Where are you going with all?
All of our policy line.
Uh, I, I think something like that is extremely helpful uh to put into a policy. Moira, would you?
Okay, I, I just, it's just so I know whose title is director of health services and wellness. That's you, okay.
Director here, yeah.
Yes, and then medical director, okay, right. Well, do you, you give medications or?
No, not typically. But, but I'm not a nurse, but this position may not always be occupied by me.
By the nurse, okay, yes, okay.
So something or future commiserate or some language like that.
Yeah.
Position or title.
Title.
They would just do a symbol like prints, no?
And then lastly, for me, um, and I, there may be some other questions, but in keeping with some of the work we've been trying to do. The um last paragraph in essence um responds to all punitive results that could happen should an error take place. And none of it seems to be restorative. And I don't know that there is a restorative option under these situations. I would hope there always would be a restorative option. But I was just reading it as like, you know, if you mess up, you're gone. If you mess up, it's termination. If you and again, that may be the role of position giving the level of seriousness. But I, the question that I wrote down was like, where is restoration? And I, and again, I don't know what that language is.
In general, if there's an error, we look at root cause, right? And then, because a lot of the times it's not, no one wants to make a mistake, right? So maybe it's because there's a thousand kids coming in at nu- at noon and so we try to figure out where the mistake will happen again. So it's not really punitive, just trying to figure out the root cause and make it not happen again and be forever okay.
Right, so that's fantastic. Thank you, Dr. D. I appreciate that. And the last sentence reads, the employer responsible for a medication error shall be counseled and or disciplined as appropriate, which may include consequences up to termination of employment.
So maybe we should add something like, and systems shall, could be changed or something like that, that would indicate that we may change a policy because we realize we need to add.
Well, that's, yeah, the previous sentence does that. Previous sentence says, will conduct a root cause analysis and shall notify the superintendent of schools or their designate about concerns regarding administration medication to students which may require administrative or board action.
Which again is punitive to me. It's concerns and it may require board action.
Well, but it might be board action to change policy or procedures.
But I think then we should specify something that's a little bit more restorative. The way in which I read it was an assumption that board action is.
How about?
Your termination.
Corrective action. Does that help at all?
I don't know, and I may be reading too much into it, so I'm fine to let it go. I, it just was
Yeah.
what caught my eye as I was reading it. So I, I, Moira, I don't know that there is a, you know, and I also know that I don't want to get us into some legal difficulties if that's what the law requires for us to do. I was just trying.
I mean, I just wonder, do we need, just to like soften the tone, um take, do we need to say which may include termination of employee? Because it would only be termination of employment if we found negligent and negligence and wouldn't that be addressed elsewhere?
I think we do need to say.
Say, okay.
Up to termination of employment, but I also think we could provide an additional something, I, I, maybe, maybe not. Maybe it's just reading too much into it. But I know that there may be a situation where the, the negligence is so severe that.
Right.
It may require termination.
Yeah.
Okay.
But most times like in the hospital and staff, if someone makes a mistake, people aren't fired unless it's deliberate or serious negligence, but it's, it's usually a system failure, right? Because there's so many things that are supposed to help protect that not happening, so.
So maybe the idea about board action is also review of district, you know, board action and review of district policies and procedures. Or something like that.
Yeah, yeah, uh-huh, right. Or um may require administration or board. Um, review. Actu- board.
To ensure appropriate systems are in place.
Yeah.
Something like that.
Yeah. Board review to ensure appropriate systems are in place. Zoe. And we have miles to go before we sleep.
No, I, I think that we're, no, thank you for your patience and for helping us work through this as well. And I think having a policy, a regulation and a procedure is helpful for probably all involved.
Yes.
Yeah, I, 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 again, I want to echo that on my appreciation. This is distilling essentially a forty-nine page document from the state, right? So we're looking at essential elements of, of the requirements and guidance provided by the state. And so you forgive the length, but really I, I feel like this is incredibly helpful.
Thank you for going through it. Because every time I read it, we see something else. We're like, why is it taking so long today?
Yes, that's what happens.
Very thankful of the patients, so.
Thank you.
Great. So Tricia, we will put all three of these on the next policy agenda with the intention of then sending it up to the board for a first reading, but it has to go to policy again one more time.
Right.
To take a look at the edits. Right, and I think what we're trying to do is already, like we're doing with some other policies, the next one coming up, is match practice to policy. So we're already engaged in these. We're just trying to codify it in the district policy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Fantastic, fantastic. Thank you so much for your patience as well. Up next is agenda item four point four, which is the purchasing policy. Um, we've already voted on this for a first reading at the last board meeting. Sending it back, there was, the hi- the changes are highlighted. And uh it was goodbye me when I read it the first time. Goodbye me again, Moira.
Yeah, me too. Yeah.
So Tricia, I think what you're hearing from us is policy six, seven, zero, zero can be sent to the full board for a second reading and adoption at our, at an upcoming board meeting.
Yes.
Great. It then brings us to policy zero, one, five, five. Zero, one, five, five dash R. So this is the.
Zero, one, one, five.
Thank you. Zero, one, one, five and zero, one, one, five dash R.
And the only issues I had with this um was uh some punctuation.
I had a couple of questions. I don't know if this goes to Amanda or to Lily. Uh, I don't know who these questions go to. Hi, Amanda. We've been having so much fun. We'll try to truncate this. Additional fun here. So in the first paragraph of the policy of zero, one, one, five. Uh, for me, I had a question as we go through, it's in the middle of the paragraph. Uh, actually, it's the, I think it's the third sentence if I'm reading correct. Both a student's ability to learn and thrive and a school's ability to educate and empower is.
No comma.
Say it again.
Get rid of that comma before is.
Is compromised by incidents of bullying, cyberbullying, discrimination, hazing or harassment. So my apologies. The next sentence, such behavior not only affects the students who are its targets. And I was just curious about its, we're referring to.
Behavior.
The behavior up above. Helpful. But also individuals who participate and witness. Great. And then the very last sentence says the board will strive to create an environment that will foster civility. Is that lea- is that the, what the goal is, is that legal language? I'm curious about the word civility.
Right, that's coming from the language of the dignity act.
Perfect. The next paragraph for me. Uh. There's a conversation about, again, um, and or or, I'm trying to see where it is. I don't know what sentence it's in. But it begins by or other classifications by school employees or students.
Uh, yeah.
On school property and at school sponsored activities. So I'm wondering if it say.
Or.
Or.
Yeah, it should be or. Yes, because it's, one is on school property. And the other is at off school property. So it should be or.
And then should it also read or events that take place at locations?
I think so, but I want to make sure.
Well, we're, okay, now where's that? Okay.
And then that second paragraph as well, Amanda. All administrators, faculty, staff, parents, caregivers, families, volunteers, contractors and students are expected to demonstrate behavior that are respectful and civil and refuse to tolerate bullying. I'm just interested about the refuse again, I'm sure it's taken, it's taken.
To refuse, I think.
Say that again?
Are expected to demonstrate and to refuse.
Gotcha. So, but tell me what that would read like after the to refuse.
To refuse, to tolerate.
Just refuse, to refuse, to tolerate.
To refuse to tolerate.
Gotcha. Amanda, I apologize. Are you following what we're saying?
I am.
Okay, so. Fantastic. And then the last paragraph um also talks about our code of conduct and may be subject to consequences as outlined in our code of conduct. And I didn't know, again, if the point was to be punitive. Um, but say it may be subject to procedures as outlined in our code of conduct to be. I'm just wondering if there's another language beyond consequences and or if that's the language that we want to use.
I think, I think it depends on how you feel about the word consequences, right? What that history is for you. So absolutely can be substituted.
Moira, you have any thoughts?
Uh, let's see, what, maybe subject to um to.
Actions as outlined in our, in the code of conduct?
Or responses.
Responses works for me. Consequences does read.
Yeah, right.
History, but it does seem punitive.
Sure. How about responses? As outline. Now I'm thinking that the um that the commas flanking outside of school sponsored events.
Where are we talking about?
In the first line of that final paragraph.
Yep.
Um, that we don't need those. Yeah, I don't think we need those commas.
Oh, I see what you're saying. So we would be specifically addressing.
Yeah.
The last paragraph would specifically address outside of school sponsored events.
That's right.
I got you. So those two commas in that last paragraph, the first sentence, don't need to be there in the first sentence. Okay. Onto the regulation, Moira.
Um. Let's see, just a second. I think we need another or, okay.
Where is that at?
Okay, so outside of school events where such acts create or would likely create a risk of substantial disruption within the school environment. Or where it is foreseeable that the conduct threats, intimidation or abuse might reach school property. So another or before the where and we don't need that comma before the where. So environment or where it is foreseeable.
What about a comma after school property?
School property. No.
Okay. Page two, regulation. Uh, first sentence is misidentified. It says one, 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 five. It should say zero, one, one, five. For both the re- the regulation and the policy.
Oh, right.
Are we on?
Zero, yeah, 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 the first sentence.
Yep. Trying to upload this here on my computer. Page two.
Right.
The first page of the regulation.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
And I, uh, punctuation questions here. Board policy, yes, zero, one, one, five. And outlines how the Ithaca City School District implements required components of the, oh, no, it's not there. It's in the next one, I think. Yeah, no, it's the uh first bullet.
Okay, feel free.
Uh, the fir- um, okay, so just following the principles and practices of quote educating the whole child, is there a slash or something between whole child and educating the whole school?
This is the, this is the title of the document.
Right, and there's no, it's.
That is, that is, I think directly from that, um, from that publication. And again, they have not updated that since twenty eleven, but it is the most current and best thing that is out there.
Um, and then there should be, the close quotation marks should come after the italicized in New York State. Not later.
Yes.
Got that?
It does raise a question about the last sentence in that first bullet. The district curriculum will emphasize empathy, inclusion, tolerance and respect for others. It seems, uh, maybe it works, okay. All right, that works for me for right now.
And I didn't really see any other problem.
Uh, it would mean semicolons in all of these bullets.
I think so.
And it does raise the question for me again of and or or at the end.
Isn't it an and?
It is, and now that I'm looking at it. Thank you. One, two, three. I don't know who's taking notes, if, Tricia, if you're taking notes, who is it, you? The third bullet, gathering information. In the middle of that bullet point, there's another one that says analyzing and using data, I think that should be its own separate bullet.
Yeah, I think so. I agree, yeah.
Keep moving forward. Amanda, is the PD work that where it says training, the Board of Education recognizes that in order to have maximum impact, it is critical to provide a minimum of annual training for all school employees, is that required?
It is.
So should we say a minimum of required annual training? Should, or does that, you don't need the word required in that section at all?
I, I think would be redundant to the law itself.
Gotcha. The Appointment of Dignity Act Coordinators. Again, we're getting nitpicky here, there's a double space between appointment of, between of and dignity. The Board of Education will annually designate at least one staff member for each school. And it says and department, that's the case, so each department has its own identified person as well.
What department do we mean, what kinds of departments we mean?
Athletics, transportation, fine and performing arts.
Yeah. Yeah.
Cause I thought of like English.
Yeah, right.
No, no, so that's a term of art that, um, how might we change that?
Well, the English department is not, yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, so when you put a school and department, right? Within the school, there are departments, but then outside of the school, there are district level.
And district level, district wide departments.
Through that right there.
Right.
Yep, perfect, that helps.
And no comma after department.
Yep. And then the question going on in that sentence, who has been trained in human relations in the areas of? That doesn't make, I, I don't get that, right? Um, in human relations in the areas of race and on down, what is that? Do we have to say in the areas of?
We don't, we don't, it's just essentially what that, the intention of that sentence is to meet the requirement of the law, which requires those coordinators, those appointed coordinators to have a higher level of training.
But, okay, trained in human relations.
You could say regarding.
Regarding.
Sure, regarding areas of, okay.
Or regarding no areas. I mean racism and area.
Can we just say who have been trained in? The Board of Education will annually designate at least one staff member for each school and district wide or district level department who has been trained, can we just say in DASSA? Or is that not?
It's, it's actually more than DASSA, it's actually, it's, it's inclusive, this allows us to also include the identity work pieces, right? Our biases that come with us. DASSA is really student focused and we also want our coordinators to understand they are managing adults who may violate DASSA.
Okay.
They also have to have that human resources piece to this, so I just would be cautious of diminishing the, those, uh, those requirements for us.
Then I guess what I would recommend is we just take out the, the. So who have been trained in human relations, areas of. The areas I.
Yeah, okay, in areas, yeah. What about just human regate? Yeah, get rid of the the, I think, you know.
We can just say trained in human relations including.
Yes.
Yeah, including, yeah.
Yep. We have a colon, so the bullets would need semicolons and a period at the end. Reporting incidents in order for the board says to enforce this policy. I'm wondering how much would it lessen the policy if we said in order for the board to effectively ensure this policy is implemented? I don't know if that lessens it too much, I mean that's. The idea. Uh, at the end of that paragraph, they are expected to inquire about how to proceed by speaking with.
Their.
I would just say their or a supervisor.
With, yes, or their. Yeah, their is fine. Cause it's, they are expected to proceed with their supervisor.
Confidentiality, we jumped to numbers instead of bullets, I don't know if that was by design. Uh, the second paragraph has numbers listed there.
Right.
No, that, that, there's no reason for that, it can be bullets.
Well, I don't, um.
Yeah, it's more of a question then whether we need to change it.
It's what, what Carrie was saying about where they use numbers deliberately, is this similar that this is the order in which, uh, these, these will be informing, that, that complainant will be informed first that it may limit the district's ability, second that, but I, it isn't really that either.
Between like three and four, right? So the district will attempt to prevent any retaliation and the district will take strong response if that happens. But one and two, I don't see that, those, right, those can, those can occur separately from.
But I, uh, I mean, I get, I think it's fine if they're all bullets, okay?
Okay. Uh, intervention, investigations and resolution. I'm asking my colleague here if the first sentence requires a comma, whether a complaint of discrimination, bullying, cyberbullying, harassment and hazing is received, comma.
Whether verber, or yes.
Whether verbal or written.
Yeah, I missed that one.
In that same paragraph, the goal of informal procedures is to ensure the safety of the target. I'm wondering if it should say the goal of informal procedures is to ensure the safety of the targeted party?
Yeah, I think that's better, yeah, but I, yeah, it's a little bit more human. The targeted party and harmful actions, prevent future incident and attempt.
Yep, I know we're running over, we'll try to push through this.
It's six twenty-nine, so.
The bottom of that has bullets, which again should include semicolons.
Right.
Uh, the second bullet, which is on page, my apology, I think I must say page three of the regulation.
Right.
The first one, conducting a separate interview of the targets and alleged perpetrators. I was just wondering of the language, um, both of target and perpetrator. And I don't know if there's, I mean, I'm sure that's legal language, but I don't know if there's more.
How about, again, conducting separate individuals of the targeted.
Party.
Individual or targeted party, parties or individuals alleged.
We've used aggressor in other words, but again, that's a pretty loaded term, right?
Yeah.
But you, so some.
Perpetrator is pretty, yeah, but alleged.
So, so unfortunately, the way the law is written, you know, it, it's someone who potentially committed harm against someone else, right?
Gotcha.
Right.
Who, so I don't know who was, and I definitely want to say alleged, we don't, we don't want to lose that.
No, yeah.
Like, we have to investigate these things, but whatever follows that, as long as we capture the, it's, it's the person who is sort of conveying the harm.
So can we say conducting separate interviews of the targeted individual slash individuals? The accused individual, uh, I lost it, so that's fine, I, we'll, we'll come back to it.
It's pretty, you can say. The dignity act, the dignity act, right?
I like something better than that than perpetrator.
Okay.
Okay.
The person who potentially violated.
The alleged violator.
Alleged, right, I mean.
Who was alleged, the person who is alleged to have violated DASSA.
Yep, that makes, that's all.
And witnesses and, and.
The next bullet point, the, there's two sentences.
Again.
And I would make the second, after the period, I would make into a separate bullet point.
Yes.
Making the individual aware of remediation opportunities as opposed to the individual be made aware, I would make that into its own separate bullet point. Maura, does that make sense for you?
Wait, okay, so we still have perpetrators again, so.
We can carry that change throughout, Tricia, wherever there's the word alleged perpetrators, we can just do a find all and change all.
Yep.
Um, they do go, th, those two go together, so perhaps we can utilize an and or, right?
Okay.
Something.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep, okay. Uh, moving down further in those bullet points, creating a communication loop for students, but this is beyond students, is it not?
Right. Right. This is.
Let me say it a couple of times.
No, it is, it's student harassment.
Okay.
Yeah.
We're good, we're good.
Yeah.
In this full paragraph that says dignity act coordinator or their designee, I think that's the first time I read that in the regulation, I don't know if we want to say that elsewhere about dignity act coordinator or their designee, or if it's specific to this, it's more of a question, doesn't necessarily need to be answered right here.
There are, there are times when the team approach is really important because you want to ensure that students through this entire process, whether they have been targeted or they actually have violated potentially the dignity act.
Yeah.
We have someone that they are in a relationship with, so this is the most therapeutic process possible.
So I want the or their designee, I don't know if we should be using it in additional spaces at.
I'm not sure that, um, we have gotten, I don't think there's any other place
Okay.
in this part that, uh, would require that.
Perfect. Appealing the DASSA investigation outcome, the question I wrote down, right, it sort of follows our process for a host of other things as well, right, it can go to the building level to then to the superintendent and then to the board. But it says here something like the complaint, i, if the complaint involves the superintendent, the complaint should be followed or referred to the board president, who shall refer to the complaint with the appropriate independent individuals for investigation. And then, I don't know if this makes sense, but what if it's the board president who the complaint is about? Where does the, and I don't know that we need to.
Wait, wait, where are we, okay. Appealing, okay, but this is about students. Oh, the board president could be the one, that's right, right.
Right, and event.
Yeah, yeah, right, right.
So I don't know if there's a next step, like if it's to the state, to the commissioner, I, I don't know whether.
I need to find that out from Kate, I don't know, I would, or perhaps the vice president, right? If that's the case, I would imagine that's the leadership.
Yep, one of the board officers may be the way.
Absolutely.
We do that, okay.
Trying to imagine. I shouldn't be trying to imagine it, let's not.
Let's not.
Um, there is a comma necessary in the penultimate bullet point under intervention. Uh, the penal, under intervention, so communicating with families and caregivers of both the target and we're going to cha, and the accused, we're going to change that one in a timely manner throughout the process, comma, including a letter outlined in the outcome of the investigations.
We were moving quickly there, Tricia, did you get that?
Yeah.
And then, again, being aware of time.
Yeah.
I had a couple of questions that I can ask at some other point in time. Well, let me ask the one that I think is important, which is in retaliation prohibited. And at one point in time, we identify that retaliation is prohibited and illegal. And then the second time we identify, I think it's the second sentence there, likewise retaliation against any person who has testified, assisted or participated in any manner in an investigation proceeding or hearing of discrimination, bullying, cyberbullying, harassment, hazing complaint is prohibited. I want to know if the second one should also say and illegal. I'm not sure I like that language anyway, but I, we say it the first time, but we don't say it the second time. And I'm not sure that it is, maybe it carries a different weight, but it's ju, it's more of just a question and maybe we can have Kate take a look at that. And then for me, lastly, in the definitions, the harassment definition is bolded but not underlined, even though all the other definitions are underlined and not bold.
Yeah, that, yeah, that's right, that's right.
But beyond that, that, um, all worked for me.
And we moved that to the bottom, we did the spacing.
Perfect, yep. We did not get to address, which I'm sure everyone is so excited about, uh, but definitely needs a close reading for us of po, of the new policy we're proposing, which is zero, one, one, six, Title ninety-six discrimination procedures. We're gonna try to get to that, that's a lo, much longer document for us to engage in somewhat. We will put that on the agenda for the next board meeting with any edits that we have from zero, one, one, five.
For the next, we'll put this on the board meeting or next policy?
Next policy meeting.
Okay.
And the policy, thank you very much Amanda, really appreciate it. And the policy two, three, five, zero about board meeting procedures. What we're really talking about is trying to change, uh, when we have, um, special presentations to make sure that our policy reflects our current practice, there may be some other changes there as well.
Right.
But I think we want to officially change our policy.
Right.
Make sure that we make way for anytime there are students or teachers.
Making a presentation.
Making a presentation that they are, they are first on the agenda, so we give people.
And there are a couple of other things I would like to discuss that are part of this policy, like.
So then that would also be on the next policy agenda for the fourteenth policy meeting in a row. All right, so if I understand correctly, we're gonna have a couple of updates from policy five, four, two, three, which includes five, four, two, three dash R and five, four, two, three dash P. We'll get that from Carrie and Melissa. Policy six, seven, zero, zero, we'll be going to the full board for an upcoming policy, uh, full board meeting for adoption. Policy zero, one, one, five and zero, one, one, five dash R will be the changes that we discussed here today. Policy zero, one, one, six, which we did not get to, will read and will make our suggestions for then, and then two, three, five, zero will also be included in our next policy. Tricia, I'll send an update like I did last time as well, just to help some new processes. Maura, anything else on your end?
No, not right now.
Not right now. Fantastic, we will bring this policy meeting to a close, thank you all very much for your patience.